Okay, good evening. I'm gonna call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for September 27th, 2021, back to order. We started tonight's meeting in executive session at 5:33, where we talked about purchase, exchange, or lease of real property. We did make a decision in that meeting. I will not be announcing it tonight. It will be kept confidential until we make the deal. With that, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public comment and announcement?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Dave Gilman, Chief of Police. In your packets, you see tonight, we've got a couple personnel actions that are happening, kind of a hail and farewell type moment. We are bidding a fond farewell to Sergeant Rick Campbell, who is retiring after serving this community for 34 years as a police officer. He came onboard in September of 1987 and was promoted to Sergeant in 2003, where he remained as a road supervisor for 18-plus years. And I'm here to tell you, that's legit. As a road supervisor and a sergeant, you're making a lot of calls out there, night after night, day after day. You see a lot of tragedy. You deal with a lot of crisis, and you learn quick. But Rick was always, you know, quick-witted, always had a smile, a good attitude. So he's gonna be missed on the line, but we're happy to say that he wants to stay on as a special police officer and help us out on details. So that is the reason for the memo in your packet, to appoint him a special police officer effective tomorrow, because his last full day was today. So I just want, on behalf of the Police Department, congratulate Rick. He is not here tonight, I don't believe, but I want to congratulate Rick on his 34 years of service and just thank him from the bottom of our hearts for doing what he's done for the community of Harwich. And on another happy note, come on up, Colin. So this is our newly-minted appointment recommendation, Colin Thomas. Colin, as I mentioned in a previous couple of weeks ago at the 9/11 ceremony, this is the young man who joined the Fitchburg Police Program four-and-a-half years ago with 90 other candidates. And a couple of weeks ago, they graduated 14. So Colin is committed to learning the career of a policeman. And he's a Cape kid. He grew up in Falmouth, so he has ties to the Cape. And he's very interested to get rolling. And we are very happy to have him, because he's got his bachelor's degree and a Police Academy certification, which means it saves us about a year in getting him on the road. He'll be going right into a field training program for about 12 weeks, and then he'll be on the road, helping us fill those holes we have in our schedule. So congratulations, Colin. We'll be voting you in a minute. That's it.
Joe, could I ask that we send our "thank you" to Rick Campbell as well on a board letter?
Absolutely, very much appropriate.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment and announcement?
Ed McMahon, that's the last meeting I was here and made an announcement regarding the Cranberry Festival and indicated that we'd be holding a meeting to talk about recruiting volunteers and hopefully recruit some volunteers next week. Cindy and I quickly put our heads together and decided it should be on the 6th, and then we both went and looked at our calendars and said, "Oops." So it's actually going to be on October 5th, the Tuesday night, at 6:30 at the Chamber Conference Room. And that's my announcement.
Thank you, Ed. Anyone else for public comment and announcement? All right, so next up is we're gonna welcome the newly-elected selectman. Welcome Julie Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's great to be back here, and I really look forward to getting to work for Harwich. So thanks again. I appreciate the support.
Comments from the Board? Larry?
Well, support comes from both. Well, obviously, it's good to have you back.
Thank you, Larry.
Mary?
I think it's interesting, where women are more than 50% of the population, that we're not quite 50% here. But glad to have you aboard, Julie.
Thank you, Mary.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right, next up is reorganization of the Board of Selectmen. So we organized four months ago at the change of the year for the Board of Selectmen, and we were missing one seat, which we just filled. So I thought I'd open it back up if anyone wanted to reorganize the Board or make motions to reorganize the Board. When we left last time, we left the Vice Chair seat open. Larry and Don are on the interview committee. Mary took clerk, and I took chairman. So right now, we have one seat left vacant for you, but you can have any seat you want based on motions from the Board.
Thank you.
Well, I'll make it simple, and I'll move that Julie become Vice Chair.
And I will second that.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Julie, you're not allowed to talk.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was easy. All right, Mary, on to the consent agenda.
I move that we vote to approve the following Harwich Police Department appointments: Colin Thomas as full-time police officer and Sergeant Rick Campbell as a special police officer.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Again, congratulations.
Now it's appropriate to say welcome.
That was good. Colin actually smiled that time, so.
Welcome aboard, and welcome to Harwich. All right, new business. Community Preservation Committee applications. Joe, I'll let you start with this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to you, members of the Board, and the public assembled. As you've heard me say many times over the past probably year, we've had a change to the process whereby, in concert with the wishes of the Community Preservation Committee Chair and the committee, any applications that are being contemplated by the town are first to come before the Board, for you to hear the presentations this evening, and then make any determinations as to whether the town should move forward on these applications. It's understood by the Chair of that CPC Committee and by the applicants, if the Board is so willing to have the application go forward, I will be listed as the applicant on behalf of the town, and then the other individuals will be related to the projects and will be the project specialists. With that, you have six applications in your packet this evening. Excuse me. I can speak to Items 1, 3, and 4, if you'd like. Perhaps it may be more appropriate to hear from the representatives here this evening that aren't related to those three, and I'll defer to them and then finish up with the three that I have.
That will work. Why don't we start with Youth Commission? Oh, go ahead, Mary.
I'd just like to ask a clarifying question here, because it was posed to me today. The applicant is you, and then it lists, as the project manager, the different department heads. Like, for example, the one for the pickleball courts and basketball court lists Eric as the project manager, but he really is not the pouring-of-cement-and-building-of-things person.
Correct.
I think that's that same discussion we got into with the library folks last week. Can you clarify what that means by having them?
I think I can.
As the project manager?
Yeah, I think I can. And what that means, first, last year, I think in an effort for the CPC to clarify what really were priorities of the town, the Chair had directed me of CPC to be listed as the applicant, to thereby show endorsement of the town for the projects. So that, this year and presumably going forward, that's why if the Board says this is a project to go forward, my name's listed. I work with those committees or departments in support of their application. As project manager, they'll be speaking to the benefits of the project, to the particulars of the project. But they are not, for our purposes, a project manager to then do the procurement or the construction. That still remains the purview of procurement of administration. We would still partner with them and look for their input, but they're not looked at to be an expert all of a sudden on construction or electrical engineering, what have you. It's really meant to conform with the CPC application. It's understood that the project manager is the key project proponent, is the way that I look at it.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that, because this was the second group that had that same wrong feeling. Thank you.
And if I may, I do reserve the right to identify certain staff if I think it's appropriate. That may help if it relates to something that's more, say, either construction or procurement-related.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. So we will start with application number two, which is the rec application. Eric?
Can I take this down?
You can.
Well, my wife barely lets me change a light bulb, so thank you. I'm Eric Beebe, Recreation Director. So what we're coming to you today for is a CPC project in the amount of 245,500. And this is for a not-so-new sport anymore. It's a big part of the project. It's to increase our pickleball courts, from currently eight courts to 12 courts. Four additional courts is the size of a tennis court. In addition to that, it's to extend our half-basketball court to a full-basketball court, which would then give us two full-basketball courts at Brooks Park. The reason that this was on the top of our priority list is because of the explosion of pickleball. And it's been exploding since it started. But this past spring/summer season, we have over 400 people signed up, adults in Harwich, for pickleball, which is by far the most popular and most successful recreation program we have. So where the need is now is more pickleball courts. Eight courts sounds like a lot, but when you're dealing with 400 people on a daily basis, it gets very crowded. We've had to turn people away this summer, because we still want to leave time on the courts for open play, for people to just show up with their families and play. The addition of four courts would help us to accommodate, you know, everybody that wants to play, in addition to more programming. We could, you know, kids are getting involved in pickleball. It's a common gym class event in the schools. We could increase our children's programming for pickleball. It's also huge for the tourists in the summer. They come down, they want to play. With the amount of residents signed up, it's very difficult to find space to do so. So that's the first part of it. The additional, or expanding the basketball court to a full court, there's really not a lot of outdoor basketball courts in town. There's really none, other than Brooks Park. So we see a huge need for that. Just open play in general, people are constantly saying, "We need more courts, we need more courts." But in addition to that, you know, we did an outdoor basketball program this summer, and it, you know, was huge. We could've done even bigger if we had more courts. The half-court is nice, but a full court would be better for games. You know, we were using the half-court for practices while the games were going on in the other court, but this would really accommodate everything we need. So that's the gist of the project. This is, you know, when we did our phases of Brooks Park expansion over the past five, six years, this is kind of an add-on to that. We did anticipate pickleball getting big. It got even bigger than our expectations, which isn't a bad thing. Like I said, it's our most popular rec program. We want to continue to accommodate that and foster that and grow that if we can. And I don't see it going anywhere. We were a little tentative at first. We wanted to see if this new sport was sticking around, and it obviously is. So we do see the need for this in town, and that's what we're aiming for as the department and commission's first priority. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Eric. Questions from the Board? Larry?
Thank you, Eric.
Yep.
I just have two questions.
Sure.
What are our fees for use of the pickleball court? Do we charge fees for the basketball court as well, the half-court?
So for pickleball court, there's no fee for open play. But for the program, it depends on the season. But for the summer season, it was $25 for residents and $35 for non-residents. It was a very affordable fee. And that money coming in helped us sustain the program for nets, balls, paddles, anything we might need to keep it going for that many people. Basketball courts, there's no fee for open play. There was a fee for the basketball program, or any programs that are run there, organized programs through the rec, but all open play is free.
So is there any discussion about increasing fees slightly to help recruit some of this, or?
It didn't, it hasn't come up yet, but I could, you know, it sure can become a topic. But the pickleball fees, as of right now, come into our revolving fund to help pay for that program.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Julie?
I don't have any questions. I just want to learn how to play.
That's what Frank's here for.
Mary?
I had the pleasure of having a tour this morning with John Mahan, and I think we were there around 9:30, and the pickleball courts were all humming. And he said, "That's nothing compared to the summer."
Yeah.
I think it's pretty impressive, and it seems to be something lots of people like, and I think it's good for everyone's health to be doing that kind of thing. So I'm in favor of the proposal.
Thank you.
I have no questions on this. I will say that an upcoming topic will be what we're charging for the middle school, the use of the old middle school gym.
Sure.
So Town Administrator will get with you on that.
Okay.
And I'm sure pickleball will probably be affected by that.
Absolutely.
On the indoor, so.
Okay.
Joe, questions?
No, just to comment that if you look at the application, on page two, it talks about other commissions, boards, committees, organizations. And so, Selectman Anderson, this really gets to your earlier question, we would want Administration Department to be listed there as well, because we'll have a role in leading the procurement.
Thank you.
Got it.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Joe, as far as voting on these go, the support on these, are we gonna do that at the end, or would you rather do that one at a time?
I think it's fine to go one at a time as they come up.
And then, have you vetted this to make sure there's enough money in each bucket for what's before us today?
So, no, that will be the role of CPC going forward, but I haven't seen anything yet that tilts the balance against that.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
So what am I moving, Michael, that we?
Support the CPA application.
Support this?
Yep.
Okay. I move that we support the CPC application for Harwich Rec, Recreation and Youth Commission for four pickleball courts and an expansion of the basketball, the half-basketball court to a full in the amount of 245,500.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Eric. Why don't we jump into the Bike Ways Committee?
Good evening. My name is Charles Walkley, and I'm representing the Bike Committee. And we're asking for funding for installation of a safety light that would be at Headwaters, the crossing of Headwaters Road and Headwaters Drive and Cape Cod Rail Trail. I forget the exact amount, Mr. Powers. I wonder if you could just look at my application.
16,000. 16,000.
Yes. It had changed a couple of times, I don't want to say. So 16,000. Our committee has traditionally taken a stance of trying to install one safety light per year, and we're just following along with that. The safety light is not really much different than any of the other safety lights that are around. One difference is we're gonna add a self-actuating button. In other words, if the electronic sensor wasn't working properly, somebody would have the option to push that and open that. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward from all the other installations.
Thank you. Questions from the Board? Mary?
I'm all set.
Larry?
I'm fine. You're not going to pull your teeth out or anything, are you?
Nope. It's easier to pull a teeth out.
Julie?
No, I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Motion?
I move that we support.
Hold on one second. Joe?
Sorry, just some administrative notes. On the application, we would want to reflect that Fran's the Chair, correct?
That's correct.
So Fran would be our project manager, and is it Charles?
Yes.
We would have you as the secondary manager, meaning they're the two primary advocates that can speak to the benefit of the project. And on page two, we would add Administration, because we'll be leading the procurement effort. And we'll be working with staff to help in that regard.
Sure. And then I guess I would just ask, when did the Board reorganize? Because it was my understanding that Fran was no longer the Chair.
I, to my knowledge, he's still the Chair.
Okay.
We can have two names from Bike Ways put, if that works.
Larry? Actually, Larry did the interview, so.
We interviewed and nominated, it's not tonight, right? It'd be next time, I guess. Nominated Fran to, he got dropped off the committee, so he's back on the committee. So you guys will have to reorganize in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Your next meeting should be reorganization committee.
I can work with the applicants to correct that.
Thank you.
Yep.
I move that we approve the Community Preservation Committee application for the Bike Ways Committee for a light at Headwaters in the amount of 16,000.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 East Harwich Union Cemetery gravestones. Robin?
Much shorter than the other people. So I had come before you guys, well, before the Board on August 9th, to go over this project with you to see if you were still in support of it. But I told you I would be coming back, because I had to update the numbers and make sure that none of the gravestones had any more damage, because it had been a year. And there were six additional grave markers that are leaning now, that weren't leaning originally when we put this through last year. So the new total is $118,800. That includes a 10% contingency fee. I filled out the application incorrectly. I will change the applicant's name to be Joe, and then leave myself as project manager, and then Steve Connors, who is our, he is the Chair of our commission. So I didn't know if you guys had any more questions. The last time we came before you, the members of the, a couple of members of the Church were here, and they spoke that they were in favor of this project moving forward. And in the packet is included both their letters.
Thank you, Robin. Joe, I'll start with you on this. Any administrative notes, or I just want to make sure we're clear this time on who the applicant is and that we have cooperation from the Church, so this doesn't turn into a debate on Town Meeting floor.
Right. I would agree. That would be the next steps. This is a preliminary application that the town is looking to move forward. So those are the next steps that Robin and I would take after submission, to be ready to answer those questions for CPC and report back to the Board.
Thank you, Joe. Mary?
I move that we approve the Community Preservation Committee application for the East Harwich Union Cemetery gravestones in the amount of $118,800.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Larry?
Thank you, Robin. Robin, is this part, do you have a plan for each of the cemeteries?
Yes. So we have a master plan that we work on in the commission, and we look at the ones that are in the, that are the most danger of losing forever. Once they crumble past a certain point, and this is one of the oldest cemeteries in the town. So these monuments that are in here are very old, but we are.
This is this, this one, and then you'll come back, what, two, three years?
Yeah. Usually, every couple of years, we do another one. So the East Harwich, the Evergreen Cemetery, has a lot of memorials in that one as well that are older, and that we'd be, we'd be looking at that one.
I think it'd be interesting to have that planned in our minutes, so that we could be available.
Okay. Sure.
Thank you, Larry. Julie?
I don't have any questions. I think it's important to preserve history. Thank you.
Any questions, Mary?
I'm all set. Great presentation. Thank you.
Moved and seconded. Go ahead, Robin.
So I came back from vacation last week, and.
Now we're gonna vote on this one, then I'll get to the other one. With no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Go ahead, Robin.
So.
Just on the application, we're gonna update page three for this one to reflect Administration and add some other names to that.
Okay, so right now, I have the Board of Selectmen on there, so am I also adding Administration?
Yes, yep.
Sure.
The Board has endorsed it, but Administration will be working with it.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Now you go.
Okay. So I was away on vacation last week when we got the memo that these were due, and I'm in the process of working on another CPC article. It is to erect a Civil War and Revolutionary War memorial, which is Phase 2 of our Evergreen Project. I am waiting for the MRO, which is the Military Records Office from Massachusetts, to get back and confirm all the submissions that I gave to them, because each memorial is charged by the letter of all the names. So until they give me that back, I called them again this morning, and I was waiting. And our applications are due on October 1st, and I was expecting to have it back, but I haven't got it back. If I do get it in time for the October 1 submission, may I come back to the Board of Selectmen for their, you know?
Blessing?
Blessing, yes.
Yes. Yes, you can.
Okay.
Joe, comments on that?
If the Board wants it to come back, I'm gonna defer on comments.
Mary, comments?
No.
Julie?
Done.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
We'll see you next week. Joe, the rest of these yours?
Thank you. So the first one, again, you've heard me refer to these as preliminary applications. This is an effort to establish a placeholder whereby we can seek funds under the historic bucket, excuse me, for the beautification of Harwich Center. It's a placeholder first, because as we've talked about, I'll be convening a meeting of stakeholders, so private businesses and enterprises within Harwich Center, to get their input on what sort of beautification items they'd be looking for. And it ties back to an earlier directive of the Board. So we'd be looking at anything that can enhance the center, whether it be decorative planters, modifying the planters that we go for the shared streets, anything to do with lighting enhancements, or being able to just create the traditional New England feel for our center of town. And so it's meant to begin the process, but very preliminary stages, because I need to have the stakeholder meeting to gather more information.
Thank you, Joe. Just for the Board, Joe did call me this week. He was gonna pull this. I asked him not to. He was gonna pull it, because it wasn't ready. But as we've talked for 25 years about doing something with Harwich Center, I think it's important we try and get something done this year. So if the Board's okay with it, we'll see this one with numbers on it in the next couple of weeks.
I just have one comment, if I may. Joe, we have the stakeholders meeting, and then there's a step in here that we will, I assume we'll be looking at decision going forward, and once they're now?
So this actually will be a part of that decision.
Will this be part of that discussion?
It would. So we've been completely cleared from the shared streets grants process. I've closed that out with the state. We've done our survey. What they directed us for next steps was figure out, as a community, what you'd like to keep, what you'd like to enhance, and what you'd like to do different going forward. And so this application supports that effort.
And that's really where I was going with this. Are we meeting their time schedule on moving forward?
We are, because basically, when you finish the survey process with the shared streets, that concludes the state's end of it. So as far as they're concerned, we earned the money. They gave it to us. We showed them how we spent it. We told them that we're gonna have follow-up discussions with stakeholders and make determinations as to how we can further impact upon the center in a positive way. So they now close our file, the grant is done, and now we take our next steps.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask?
Go ahead.
Are you able to meet the 10-1 filing for CPC?
We are. The Chairman and I had a conversation several weeks ago with the Chair of CPC. He offered an extension. I declined politely, indicating that if you give extensions, you just tend to bleed into time, but told him that some of the applications might be rudimentary to start and he endorsed that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything, Mary?
No. I think what was done with the shared streets looks good and anything we can do to enhance it would be great. I move that we...
We're gonna move, we're gonna, we'll hold on this one.
Oh, we're gonna hold?
Until it comes back or do we wanna just, do you wanna vote to support the article?
I would need support to actually make the application for the October 1st.
Go ahead, Mary.
I move that we vote to support the Community Preservation Committee application to beautify Harwich Center in the amount of $100,000.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So the third application is on behalf of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Our applications or items number three and four are repeats, if you will. So the first one talks about seeking $500,000 through CPC fundings under the Community Housing Bucket and this is a recurring article. It is to fund the creation and preservation of affordable housing within the town of Harwich. It was previously endorsed by the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for zero and so the application just continues with that effort going forward.
Motion?
Sure.
I move that we approve the Community Preservation Committee application for Affordable Housing Trust Fund to fund creation and preservation of affordable housing in the amount of $500,000.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And last but not least, again, recurring application on behalf of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. This is the part-time housing coordinator. It's, the dollar amount, I believe, has been consistent since first inception, going back to 2018. However, as you folks know from your discussion last week, the Assistant Town Administrator and I are actively developing the job description for this position that will come before you folks next week at your regular meeting for the board to endorse the actual housing coordinator. So this will be the first time in the four years with the funding where we would not be looking for a vendor to provide housing coordination, but rather actually achieving the original intention of the article at town meeting and that is to have a part-time housing coordinator in the town, supported by the town, employed by the board and working with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, the housing committee predominantly on their housing production plan and being the first point of contact on all matters for affordable housing.
Thank you, Joe. Mary?
I move that we approve the Community Preservation Committee application for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to fund a part-time housing coordinator in the amount of $50,000.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
We discussed this at length last meeting, I think, so...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. All right, on to new business B. Town administrator to update the Board of Selectmen on the finding of facts for show cause hearing that were held July 8, 2021 and continued to July 23, 2021 and July 27, 2021 for Seal Pub and Perks. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So first, this is a, the update to the board is that I am 95% complete and I say that in case anybody puts in a public records request, they're not ready yet, but that I will be presenting my findings of fact to the board at your meeting on October 4th. I wanted an opportunity to give a courtesy and it is merely that, meaning the town's under no obligation, but we will give courtesy notice to the establishment so that they're aware of my decision and the next steps for the board to take it up at the hearing next week. So that will be going out very early this week. It'll first go to the board and then to the establishments and then it'll be in your packet for next week.
Thank you, Joe. Questions for Joe?
No.
No.
All set.
All right. And now we go to new business C. Update from the town planner and request for proposal for local comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. Welcome, Julie. How are you? Last time I met with you and talked about the LCP, I mentioned that I would be in the process of drafting an RFP for a consultant. There's approximately $200,000 appropriated currently from town meeting. The RFP that, we did have a draft RFP from the former town planner. Wasn't as far along as I want it to be, given, I think, what the town needs and what the town wants from a local comprehensive plan update. I'm, I'm well along in drafting that RFP for the consultant. I have to work with administration because there are certain procurement issues we need to deal with in that plan, you know, things along the nature of, you know, where our respondent's going to respond, what's the selection committee going to be for the consultant, things of that nature. I would expect to put that RFP out sometime later in the fall with the selection made maybe, you know, later in the winter and be along the way with an LCP, probably early 2022 with the selection of a consultant to help us with some of the more technical items of an LCP update. I provided you a memorandum. Another issue I provide, I addressed in that memorandum is, inasmuch as the planning board is the entity in the town under the charter and under state, state law that would pass along an LCP update to town meeting for adoption. You know, certainly I would expect the selectmen would name a steering committee or a, a local planning committee to help the drafting process, the update process with the LCP. So that's something actually, you know, we can work on as soon as the board and administration would like to start on that. You would have to empanel master plan committee or a local planning committee and, you know, I think it's, it's worth a discussion. Who would you want on the committee? I would just say make it as broad as possible in terms of stakeholder and perspective and interest because that's exactly what you want in your local comprehensive plan update. So I'm happy to take any questions to have.
Thank you, John. Questions, Larry?
I, I, thank you, John. I think you answered mine. I was a little confused by the, the local planning committee was, that was, you considered that a subcommittee of the planning board, but you don't. That's, that's a broader committee that will have representatives from a variety of groups. And that, we just have to see how that develops, I guess. I don't have any other questions.
And I think you're gonna have a, you know, strong role with that. I think in one sense, the local planning committee has to be somewhat independent of the planning board. So it shouldn't just be the select board. It shouldn't just be the planning board. You know, of course, maybe there should be a man, a member of the planning board, member of the select board, but certainly members of the citizenry or civic groups. It can be brought, as broad as you want it to be. I think the only limiting factor on breadth is you want the committee to actually do the work that needs to be done. Sometimes you get a committee too large and it's, you're unable to, to come to certain conclusions.
I certainly would like to have some, have selectmen have some input into the makeup of that committee.
Julie?
Yeah, I think the steering committee is important and I think it would be nice, again, to your point, though, you don't want a large committee, but it'd be nice to incorporate, represent, right, from each area if possible without making it too large. Thank you, John.
There are, there is nothing in law that dictates how many members, that's, I think it, I would put that on the select board to appoint the local planning committee and determine how many members you'd want on that committee.
Thank you.
Mary?
Larry and I were on the same wavelength here because that was my question. I get having it as broad as possible. What particular background do you think is helpful to that type of committee?
Well, I think you want, I think you wanna look at the makeup of the entire committee and just come up with people from broad backgrounds. I don't think you necessarily need experts.
Okay.
I think maybe to, to look for some people who have some, a long relationship with the town. I mean, that's enough of a, I think, criterion for one of the positions on the committee. But I think you'd be creating your own criteria and I'm happy to work with you on it and happy to work with administration.
Okay, thank you.
Joe?
First, I want to thank John for his memo and his update to this point. He's keeping the, the process going and I appreciate that. So I don't want to give short shrift to the RFP, but that's old hat and it's in process. To me, the most important part of John's memo tonight is exactly what he just finished on and that is empaneling the local planning committee. I've been in communities where you've had committees as large as 11. I recommend strongly against that. I've worked in communities where you've had seven to nine and I will also tell you that I'm trying not to use the word odd number because I get taken to task for that, but we want to make sure that we have an uneven number. And I think what John was getting to and whether he isn't, this is my take on it, you, you want to find people that are willing to dive into an issue of tremendous importance for the town that we do once every decade to this level. So there needs to be a commitment of time and effort into this. You certainly want to rely on people that have specific points of view or advocacy points of view, if you will. I'm probably gonna mess it up when I say it right now, so I'll look back to our planner to bail me out, but we're talking about crafting our master plan for our land use for the next decade. And so you want to look for, for, as John said, I would, couldn't agree more. We're not looking for experts, to me, so much as we're looking for advocates. We're looking for people who want to, you know, give of their time and their philosophies so that when it comes back to the board and town meeting and everybody else, we've had this wide array of opinion. So you don't need 11 people, but you could have seven people with varying degrees of perspective that could really benefit in the creation of the plan. So you want folks that are gonna give the time, the effort and their opinion and it doesn't have to be an expert in land use. It doesn't have to be an attorney who knows zoning necessarily. I know I just described both times our planner, but, you know, you, you want as many opinions and perspectives on land use as you can get. And so if that doesn't answer your question, I would say good because you folks want to have a broader discussion amongst yourselves as to what you want that to be. We can draw upon past committees that may have been or what other towns have done, but from my perspective, you're looking for folks that really want to weigh in on our land use policies and, and vision for the next 10 years.
Further comment?
Done.
So I'll, I'll put this back on for the 12th.
Excellent.
So the, the fourth, we have Chloe's Path and a few other things, Joe. So let's put it on the 12th, which is a Tuesday.
Mr. Chair, can I add something? Joe, thank you. That was, that was great. I just want to be careful that advocate doesn't necessarily mean a zealot or someone who uses that position as a bully pulpit.
I would agree with that.
Because that's exactly the person you probably want to stay away from. Someone who ultimately is doing this for the benefit of Harwich, who can ultimately talk with others about the variety of perspectives and ultimately come to agreement that many of those different perspectives can live under one roof, so to speak.
Thank you, John.
If I may, I have to follow on that. He's absolutely right. Advocacy to me is somebody that is committed to the overall team goal. Zealotry is not, so I totally agree with John on that.
Thank you. So the board, as much as you can dive into it between now and the 12th?
Yep.
One more. Old business update on the Judah Eldredge property.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On that, I am still working with counsel on the Judah Eldredge. First, again, to, to continue to educate myself, but she is working on the town meeting vote and researching next best steps and so I have to, I hope to have an update to the board, perhaps when she is present for our discussion next week on Chloe's Path, but I'll find out more this week on that one.
Thank you. West Harwich School requests for proposal. So Joe, you did give us a memo. You want to explain that memo?
I, I do. And, well, I'm, I'm gonna stand by the memo because it ends with really some, some questions for you folks to decide. But as I said last week, the Assistant Town Administrator and I were the staff committee that reviewed the RFP response from the, the West Harwich, the Historic West Harwich Group Incorporated. And so the criteria were very clearly spelled out. There were two categories, if you will, and they were highly advantageous or not advantageous. And so I have an obligation as your chief procurement officer to evaluate that and you can see my grading, if you will, on those criteria. And the answer is, from my perspective as your chief procurement officer, the proposal does not rise to be a highly advantageous proposal for the town's benefit. However, if you look at the, the second page after the recitation of the criteria, I do want to emphasize several of the rights that the town reserves, town being in this case either me as their chief procurement officer or most often in this case, the Board of Selectmen. So even though I have determined that their proposal is deemed to be not advantageous, that's what's afterwards known as an initial evaluation. The board, you could direct me to have conversations with the proposer to see if there's any more information that they could provide to really perhaps fill in the blanks or what I consider to be missing pieces of information that make it not advantageous versus highly advantageous. But I do want to emphasize and read, if I could, for a moment, three rights that the town reserved throughout this process and, and the board can then take action on any of those rights. First of all, the town reserves the explicit right to select a proposal which does not necessarily contain the highest price and/or economic benefit to the town. Now what that really says is the town determined that there was a value greater than $35,000 for that property and as I've told you before, we relied it on, upon the assessor's property card to determine the value, which is allowed under 30B. But you're not bound by simply that. If you feel that price is not your main evaluation, excuse me, I don't want to use that word because of the evaluation criteria, that price is not your main driver or that it's not the greatest benefit of the town, but you derive some benefit. You have the right under 30B because we gave notice to all potential proposers that you could say you're going in, in a different direction. That is to say, despite the fact that they didn't meet the criteria that I've seen, you can ascribe another value to that and you have that right, that explicit and sacrosanct right as the Board of Selectmen acting on behalf of the town. The second right says that the Board of Selectmen reserves the right to reject any and all proposals or to cancel the RFP. And to me, that one's very straightforward. You could say, you know what, we tried this one, it didn't work, let's scrap it and do something else. And then last but not least, as part of the evaluation process, the town reserves the right to conduct interviews with the proposers at either the initial evaluation, which I've already done, or finalist state of evaluation process in order to assure a full understanding of the proposals. That's the one I talked about before. So you could direct me to have conversations with them. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it at that. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have and certainly add any other thoughts if you're so interested.
Thank you. Julie, I'll start with you.
Well, I remember this from, an episode board previously. And again, you know, I think then as now, we, we understand the importance of historic buildings in town, but I think in this particular item, I'd like to see them have an opportunity to address the things that are missing, to see if they can help build a stronger application to give them that chance and any other alternatives that they might be interested in pursuing.
Thank you. Larry?
Yeah, thank you, Michael. Thank you for that, Joe. Kind of along the thread that Julie, you started, I think. You know, I, I, I found the evaluation somewhat interesting because it seems to be based on a, which is, I'm sure is appropriate way of thinking about it, but we're thinking about someone coming to the party with a, with a fully developed plan as we would selling a private property, you know, with a money in hand or a loan in hand and, and I think our discussion throughout on this has not been that because we've, this is, I think, the third or fourth, help me out, times we've had an RFP on this with no buyers. And I'm not sure we have someone, if, if the information was in our packet last week is correct, we're talking million plus dollars to try to bring that up to speed. So I see this as, I would approach it a different way. If we decide that building and that property is worthwhile, then we should give the chance for the groups to come back and progressively see how they, they could move this forward in a positive way before we would, we reject it.
So you go with number three. Have conversation.
I go with conversation because I said, I don't want to repeat myself, but, but I don't think we can ask this group to come with a, with a final plan at this moment. That was, has never been the intent. I would hope that it would be, I see some of them here that it gets developed relatively quickly because I don't want to hang on forever on it.
Thank you. Joe?
Just if I could in response, that's why you'll see in the second page of the memorandum that I, I put in there that one of my concerns is, is that if, if the board were agreed to a sale price, be it a dollar, $20,000, whatever the case may be, we now know that that private group is going to rely upon CPC applications and it would have to be the historic bucket, given, you know, the way that we've categorized this. The town always has projects of an historic nature and so we're contemplating being at cross purposes in the very near future. So for me, you've directed me to do a request for proposals and we've done that and we have a group that is interested in, in renovating for a community use. One of the things the board could do is say, we're going to scrap the proposal and the town may pursue those community preservation money. You know, it, it, the question is, does the town wish to rid itself, for lack of a better phrase, of that property and that building to give it to a private owner and let them do with it what they will for historic purposes or does the town wish to restore it to historic purposes? Because one thing for me, the directive that I still feel is very clear, is I, I've been directed amongst others to look for revenue. We have a group that has admitted that they have $20,000 in funds. Now, we have valued the property at well over $35,000 and close to $150,000. I'd take $20,000 for the town and call it even. And so for me, the question is, who's going to do that effort on historic preservation? I could have those conversations with that group. I can tell you from past experience that there are any number of grant programs that they seem to be aware of, but haven't pursued basic information on and those would be grants that municipalities would not be eligible for. Private nonprofit historic advocacy groups would be. My concern is, is they're, they're looking to get it from the town and then rely upon the town to fix it. And that's what I mean about cross purposes right now.
So Joe, the only correction I'll make is last week when they spoke about it, there's, they did list and even in the RFP, several other organizations that they were applying for money. I, like you, was very reluctant to start supporting this because I didn't want to see a building go for a dollar or $35,000, wherever we end up. A dollar I certainly can't support. And town meeting gave us this building to sell and only sell recently. Prior to that, it was lease. There were several other things. So this is the first shot at sales that I know of or can remember. So this is the first shot at sales that I know of, or can remember. I would support number three, just to have the conversation with the group, and I have had several conversations with people for and against, and I do believe they've made some headway from where they were when we first talked about this last week. So, I don't want to see another building get sold to somebody and then a million dollars of our CPC money go into that building. I don't believe that's their intent from talking to them, so I think the conversation's worth having, and the conversation certainly is worth having about where we're going to get to from a dollar, because that's certainly not enough for me, and I think they all know that at this point. So, I would like to join the conversation, if the board's okay with it, and I would like you to set up the meeting so that we can start the conversations, and then report back to the board sooner rather than later, because we have talked about this for a lot of years, and it's time to move forward. Mary?
I thought you forgot me. I'm going to be the outlier on number two. I'm certainly willing to have that meeting and listen, but I'm not excited about a building when I know there are people that need places to live. It appears, we talked about it at the last meeting, that you could put four units in there, rental units. About 800 to a million was the guestimate from a well-respected realtor and developer. We took a look at it a week or so ago, and maybe use some CPC funds to keep the exterior so it stays the historic facade. I'm also concerned about Brooks Academy that is going to need a whole lot more than the, what, 1.2 that we've committed so far? And I just see these two projects doing that while people don't have places to live. So, I'm going to be the outlier on this one, I think.
Thank you, Mary. Do we need a, do you want a consensus, Joe? Just a...
It would be helpful. For example, if the board is looking to go with option number three, I would understand that to be the finalist state of evaluation. It's entirely appropriate that the board either conduct it or have a member and have staff do it, but that it would be understood that it's the final stage. It's the last point of discussion before we have to make a final decision.
Thank you, Joe. Larry, would you support three?
I would.
Julie?
I would, yeah.
And I would as well. So I think that's our consensus. Mary would not support. You'd go to two.
Right.
So you have a consensus. Before we pick a date, I would ask, the applicant is in the back, and then Duncan Berry, who spoke on this last time, how long's enough time for you to prepare everything to bring back to us? I could put this meeting together as early probably as next week, but do you want two weeks to look at some of the other grant opportunities you have, and more money, or whatever you come up with?
Well, thank you very much for the consideration on the third option. I think that gives a little breathing room, because here we go, a building that's from 1871, and then we've got to act on it in, you know, X number of weeks, right? So like, it's like throwing a paper airplane three miles to get through the slot, and, you know, it's a very tight time slot for us, particularly because one of the things that we've been trying to encourage all the way along is essentially a kind of a joint venture, where we could help broker something that could be suitable for the town, again, institutionally with educational organizations, that would provide the manpower and the funding. And you all are the beneficiaries, and we're just like the middlemen. So, to that end, I've been asked to come down and do a pitch to two of the organizations about this building. Now, I don't have a time set for them, but could we get, you know, 10 or 12 days for me to get something lined up and possibly down to South Carolina and back? I mean, then I can come back with hard, like a letter of intent, with a letterhead of an organization or two that could say, yeah, we, and they would probably want to see the property, obviously not by sight unseen. So, I mean, that's what I'm hoping to do, as kind of like a player between the LLC and the town, and just somebody who's interested. So, I'm just throwing that out there as a consideration. I don't know what your time sensitivity is. That's all.
Go ahead, Joe.
I'll match it up and confirm tomorrow with 30B. Generally speaking, I'm not concerned about the timeframe, because the board reserves the right to do this process. You know, we got the applications, we did the initial evaluation in the same month. If we do the finalist evaluation in the next month, that's not a problem. But I, it does need to be clear, though, you referred yourself as a middleman, and we need to make sure we're dealing with a, an officer of the organization that proposed. Can I get, just get confirmation on, because, you know, under 30B, it has, the conversation has to be with the proposer and not with other agents.
Good evening, Sally Urbano, West Harwich. I'm the proposer for the group. Yes, if you're asking, can we come in in 12 days or so, that would, that would be great because, you know, I answer to my board, and they are, I have two people that are out on vacation right now, so that time would be very helpful, and also would be helpful for me to know. I hear you clearly that you want to know more of the funding sources, and the funding rounds, a lot of them begin now, but I'm curious to know what, more specifically, you want in those categories.
Sure, I, that's a conversation more for the evaluation discussion, not at a public meeting.
Okay, good enough. Then 12 days it is. Thank you.
So why don't we look at the week of the 18th? We're pretty booked on the agenda through the 12th. So why don't we look at the week of the 18th, and you can set it up with staff, a time to come in and have that conversation.
Sounds great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Welcome, Julie.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion, possible vote to declare Willow Street surplus land. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to make sure I have it in my notes. I hope that you had in the packet some basic information. When I researched Willow Street, I was able to find, first of all, that the board had reshaped the boundaries and done that agreement last year. However, in, excuse me, in preparing for this meeting, I believe it may be that Willow Street was already declared to be surplus property, and if that's the case, there's no further action that needs to be taken, we would then initiate an RFP for sale. And so I think, while I had that on the agenda, I think it's already been done based on past town meeting articles and other documents that I've read.
Thank you, Joe. I believe it has too, but do you want us to reaffirm that?
It wouldn't hurt. Thank you.
Okay. Motion?
So, Michael, I'd just clarify, because my memory, I may, this has been, another one's been going on for a long time. And, Joe, part of this, you know, we gave the property around that for affordable housing, but the deal was to keep that building as a historical structure, is that the, my speaking here?
I didn't know that last part, sorry.
So this is a separate lot?
This is a separate lot.
This has nothing to do with the Habitat project?
Okay.
And that house in front of it? This is an independent lot that we had to resurvey the bounds. Somebody had encroached on the lot.
Okay, thank you, then. I forget my question.
But if I may, and further, that there was a directive that had been disposed of for affordable housing purposes. And so that's broad enough that we could sell the land and redirect the proceeds for affordable housing purposes.
Okay, good. That helps me out.
And then, Joe, that would work. You would, you would open this up for town entities to say if they want it?
Well, that's what I'm saying. The town meeting vote that I read indicated that it had already been, had been declared, so it's my understanding that that process already went through.
Okay.
So really, the next step is just for me to establish the RFP, to try and sell it and use the proceeds, redirect the proceeds.
And you'll bring that back to us in a week or two?
I can shoot for the 12th if that's acceptable.
Perfect. Now, Mary, I would take a motion.
I move that we vote to issue an RFP for the Willow Street surplus land.
No, just to declare Willow Street a surplus land.
Oh, all right. I move that we vote to declare Willow Street surplus land.
Second.
Moved in second, and this really is just reaffirming something that's probably already happened.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up is disposition of 203 Bank Street. Joe, I'll let you open this one as well.
Thank you, and thank you for your previous vote. So, you're probably sensing a theme. We're talking about surplus property and the disposition of that, and I'm going to rely upon greater minds than I. Link, you got to look in my direction. Thank you. I will rely in a moment on our Planning Director and our Director of Public Works to talk about the remediation needs and all of that. I've read all the reports we have, and I know I'm going to botch it if I try to explain it. I think they can do it better. However, from my way of thinking of where we're at, there are two distinct actions that I would need the board to contemplate. So you can see that the first one is to make, for the board to make a determination on the abatement, remediation, and demolition of the building that is at 203 Bank Street. Really, what you folks would be deciding is, if demolition should proceed, then our experts can talk about what our responsibilities are. If we demolish the building, what would we have to do relative to those known and presumed hazardous materials? And so first, you need to tell me, are we going to demolish the building? They, John and Link, can help us decide what our obligations are if we demolish, what our obligations are if we were looking to sell as is, and go from there.
Thank you, Joe. My suggestion is, to start, we don't demolish the building, because I know we have at least one organization that's interested in rehabbing that old fire station, and they can't rehab it if we tear it down. I think we could be crafty with our RFP to open it broad, bid on it with the building, bid on it without the building, bid on it with part of the building and the other building, other portion of the building destroyed, but I think that it would be premature to knock that building down now. Mary, I'll open it up to you.
I agree with you. If there's somebody that wants the building, why take that out of the equation?
Thank you. Julie?
So, yeah, if there's somebody who wants the building, who's willing to do all that remediation, I mean, obviously, if there's asbestos, et cetera, in there, that's something that concerns me. So if somebody wants to take on that expense and save the building, I guess my next question, though, is, you know, what exactly would that use be? Because we talked about the clearing of that conservation area and the improvement of the estuary of the land, the water, and all that down to Sacro Tucket, so we wouldn't want something in there impacting that.
So I think I can say it publicly, because it's been talked about publicly, but the Harwich Fire Association is interested in purchasing the old firehouse to possibly redo.
To like have some sort of...
Yeah, meeting hall, and place to put their old trucks.
Oh, okay, okay. So then, I guess that answers that. So, yeah, I would be in favor of that.
Larry?
Well, I'm not going to argue against keep, we've talked about demolishing the building. I'm not going to argue against it if someone, but my question remains, is how much forecast be done there? Yeah, has any, Joe, do you know, or Link, has that been tested for any asbestos, lead, etc.?
So I can answer that one. That's the reference in the memorandum. If you look at the first paragraph in bold, so the town had acquired the services of Acxiom Partners Incorporated, and so they did a comprehensive evaluation of the building, and as they indicated that, you know, the purpose there was for them to perform sampling for a list of potential, potentially hazardous building materials. And so their report had determined that there were findings of every type of hazardous material listed above present to some manner and degree. Now, some are worse than the others, such as potentially the asbestos and the lead paint. But that was done in 2017. It's my understanding that part of that was done, which led then to a 2019 capital outlay article of $60,000 for the purpose of demolishing the building. And there was talk about using, once the building was demolished, to use that for parking. To further complicate it, and I've had conversations with staff and folks that have told me that they may be interested in responding to proposals, I want to make it clear that I don't go far in those conversations, because that's not appropriate for my role. But if you look at the history of the town meeting actions, it's actually four parcels. That's not just 203 Bank Street. And so, we have, sorry, the town, through the town meeting to the board, I don't mean to insert myself in your royal we, if you will, but you have a directive from town meeting to dispose of all four parcels. And so the demolition question's only one part of that. You know, then the next big question is, okay, what do we want the RFP to be? Because there's four parcels there. And so, we have money, we have $60,000 set aside, presumably for remediation, if that's what we need to do, presumably for demolition, but I'll defer to our DPW director, who could probably talk better about the actual costs of demolishing that building and remediating. So we have some funding available. I don't know that it's sufficient to do everything. But I also know we have obligations, that if we're going to sell it, and I appreciate and agree with the concept of RFP writers need to be adept and all-encompassing or broad, I don't know which way to go, but we'd also have to put in there that, you know, there are known hazardous materials, and whether we have the right to foist that on the buyer, I don't know. And that's why I've asked these other experts to be present and ready.
Thank you. I think immediately, the question is, and the motion would be referred to, and Larry, I guess I should start back to you. Did you get your answer?
I hope so.
Well, directionally, you did. It's one thing to say that we have mercury, we have, you know, hazardous waste areas. It's a different issue to make some estimate of what it would cost to remediate it, because that, I don't know, $60,000 is probably pulled from there, and some type of general cost. And I think that's vital to know, you know, where we go forward on that, because remediation could mean lots of things. Could be tearing down, basically tearing down the building, get rid of the stuff.
Right.
Or, you know, so I think we have to be careful, is my point, that goes out to sales, someone has to pick that cost up.
We certainly can disclose that in the RFP, and then see what we got. This is the youngest building that we have that we're trying to get rid of. So, and it was a new action by town meeting, so it's not 30 years old, so I think we have some time to make this one work.
I don't want to hastily tear down any building, but I want to be very cautious, because you know there's problems there.
So I would entertain a motion to not tear down 203 Bank Street.
I move that we do not tear down 203 Bank Street, the building.
Can I ask one question to John?
Can we second, second it?
Sorry, second.
Discussion? Go ahead.
Sorry, thank you. John, do we risk anything by losing any kind of use if we were to tear down the building? Just in general question.
Yeah, I think you're kind of hitting on a zoning issue, and zoning is broadly divided into uses and intensity of uses. It's actually always been a conforming use, a municipal use. It's allowed in every zoning district. It's currently split-zoned between two residential districts. So in terms of use, I don't think anything is lost. Joe referred to four parcels. Those don't necessarily mean lots, and this is, I think, a subset of what Joe's talking about. You're talking about demolition and hazardous materials, but I was actually more prepared to talk about, you know, how develop, how developable the land might be. Without getting into the weeds so much, it's my opinion at this point, that you're basically talking about a single lot there. There's a potential, maybe, to divide it north-south, but the build, based on the frontage on Bank Street through an A&R division plan. The buildability of the resulting lots really depend on two things, where the flood plain might be there, and I think that there are portions on this, what might be the potential southerly lot, and wetlands jurisdiction. I think Amy Zowsky talked a little bit about that to you. So assuming both would remain buildable, and especially where we might make a regulatory change in the town with the size of regulatable wetlands, we would have to look at those things to determine what the building envelope might be on the southern lot. Now, to the extent you were to leave the former fire station there, all I'll say, without disclosing what sort of hazardous materials might be there under the report that was done, there are certain materials that are better left untouched. So the town might be in a better position with the type of materials that are there, not touching the building whatsoever. There are type, there are types of materials, I know your science background, you know this, Larry, there are some types of materials, when you disturb them, they move and then can create problems. So, just long and short of it, I think the type of materials I know about, and that might be revealed in the report, are left better untouched in place.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, what he said.
Well, hypothetically, somebody could respond to the RFP and say, we want the town to remove and remediate, as part of their response to the RFP.
Right.
And somebody could respond and say, we want to keep half the building. So, I think we keep it broad and see what we get. We can always reject and do it again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not that we want to.
Yeah.
Further comment?
No. I like keeping it broad and... No, I, I like keeping it broad and seeing who's out there that's interested.
Joe, do you need more direction than we just gave?
Nope.
For the second piece of this? I think we're pretty clear, right?
Well, I think it's appropriate to take a vote and then I can answer the next question.
So the vote we've, oh, so we have not voted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Go ahead, Joe.
That was to not tear down.
That's correct.
Correct, yep. And then with regard to the determination, I, I think our, our director of planning and community development just made a fantastic statement. You know, I, as your procurement officer, see four parcels. Our planner sees a lot, a lot, sorry, not the word that my kids use all the time. And so that I think was helpful for this next part of the discussion. So it's really to get from the board, what sort of, what we're looking to do? Are we looking to do an RFP that could encompass all the parcels but look perhaps for one use from the, from the proposer, if that makes sense?
Makes sense to me. Mary?
I'm not sure I totally understood what you said.
Me either, so I'm gonna try it again if I could. Meaning as a layman, you know, I hear four parcels, I hear a bank street and I think, wow, we could probably make a lot of money. You know, everything else be damned, if you will. And that's not what I'm hearing from our experts, that you can't just look at that as four parcels that could be two buildable lots or whatever the case may be. It was a municipal building for use forever and ever and next steps could be limited in what can be done there.
Based on the environmental issues around?
Like I said, everything that Eidman said where I say ditto.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The other thing I would add is in a residential district, basically residential uses are the primary or sometimes the only, the exclusive uses allowed. Interestingly, nonprofit educational uses are also allowed in residential districts. And I'll, I'll just leave it at that apropos of the other things we've been discussing this evening as well.
Thank you, John. Julie?
No, I, I don't have any, I think for the time being till we have better feel on what kind of, you know, RFP and what kind of action we would get on that and how much remediation anybody is willing to do to make it safe, then it's a case of, you know, let's leave it alone for obviously health purposes, but also zoning purposes, let's leave it be until we know better who else is interested.
Larry?
Maybe directed to John. In terms of the, the parcels we're talking about in the building lot, do they influence each other? I mean, does the, having a building there and that parking envelope, does that influence the, the entrance, you know, the accessibility of the other parcels? How's that layout work together?
I, I guess this gets to the fundamental question of why I think this is one lot, why my opinion is it's one lot. There's a theory under zoning called merger. And basically you start with relatively small lots, zoning intensifies, lot sizes increase over time. And in, in abutting parcels, it's a matter of law, without any voluntary action are assumed to be joined together to best meet the zoning then in place. There's also something else that's gone on over time. Basically the lots, at least three of them have been used together. There's the building and then there are driveways, there are parking. It's effectively been used as, as, as one lot. Then interestingly, there is also this strange shaped parcel associated with this. It's an, it looks an awful lot like a road and at one time it was a road laid out in 1975 through the subdivision control law through the planning board. The town, it was Hunt family property. Town meeting ultimately ended up taking it and the way I read the taking, it was not taken as a road, it was taken as a parcel. So the, so really the, the road was never exercised, there are no road rights anymore. That thing that looks like a road is just a parcel shaped like a road, the subdivision was, was never exercised. And also I think for that reason, that probably joined in to the abutting land. The, the parcel itself, the fire station was originally on, and I think it goes back to the 1940s, is very small. The, the, the fire station basically had no setback to the lot lines. It was, you know, constructed prior to zoning. So I think long way around it is saying, you know, perhaps you could get two lots out of there, but I think it's most conservatively, most offensively, it's probably treated as one building lot, especially with the way wetlands and flood plains might influence, especially the southern portion of the land. That said, redeveloping it, you probably, there is some benefit to the ultimate redeveloper because of the disturbance in the wetlands area and the buffer zones there too.
A follow-up question on that. The two lots, would that mean that the fire station could stay intact if the firemen wanted to do that project and we'd still have a second lot that could be sold?
Yeah, I'm, I'm throwing out the two lot potential as a maybe. We'd have to look more into that. I certainly think you could get a, if you divide it north and south, if you think of it that way with frontage along Bank Street, the limiting factor is minimum lot size, which is 40,000 square feet. Basically have a little more, more over two acres there. But things like flood plains aren't factored into, can't be factored into lot area for newly created lots. The northerly lot I think will, would certainly be buildable. That could contain the fire station. Whole question is if you divide it, can the southerly lot be built upon? And that would be affected by wetlands areas, wetlands buffer zones and flood plain areas. It may ultimately be, be the best option for the town to keep it all together.
Thank you.
And, and the way I'm looking at these maps, one of the lots is .25, the other one were parcels, .25 and .45. I mean, they're, they're small. The whole lot's only 2.8, so.
2.0.
2.08.
But to John, it's .2. If there's wetlands and you've got a 0 to 50, nothing's going in that 0 to 50.
I, I think the RFP is a one lot or one lot with a building that can't be a commercial building. It's gotta be nonprofit, private nonprofit. Joe?
And if I may, the discussion that we just had about the, the four parcels, that total value, while it is 535,000, really the point on that is under chapter 30B, it's greater than 35,000. There's no cap when we do an RFP, so we know we have to do a request for proposals because it's greater than 35,000. We don't have to contemplate proposals that come back with half a million dollars in response. It is merely the value that determines the process we have to take.
Julie, follow up?
No, I'm just thinking of, you know, when I was on the board previously and we talked about the improvements being made in restoring that old bog back, you know, and, and the benefit that that would be. So, you know, keeping it as some sort of nonprofit use and leaving it alone and remediating the issues there seem to be better than trying to think that we're gonna sell it and possibly harm the work we've already taken under, so.
Larry?
I take that point. I'm still hoping we can get, because at one point, one of the warrant articles, we were hoping to sell part of that and use that to help fund the new Harbor Master stations, if you recall.
Right.
So I'm hoping that there's still maybe one, something sellable there in addition to the fire station, so we'll see.
Joe?
To that point, I, if I recall correctly, the finance director has indicated that, well, I think we're almost done paying off the debt related to that property. So technically we could replenish the sale of land account, but the original purpose, because it's gone on so long, is almost non-existent.
Well, I understand that. I'm just saying that we were, we were hoping to generate some funds for the town at that, at that point.
John?
Well, through you, Mr. Chair, to Larry, I mean, the value is yet to be seen. I mean, I, I wouldn't assume it's a dollar, you know, a nominal sale.
Good point.
Maybe there's an abutter who wants a portion. Just wondering.
I'll also throw out there, the town has a, that subdivision road actually led back to a lot that's already been, been put under the care and custody of the Conservation Commission. So from a land use or real estate perspective, I would just ensure whatever the board does that it retains an easement and express easement to get back to the town's land, which is behind, to the, to the east of the fire station property.
Joe?
And just one last thought while we talk about, you know, I said we can rely upon the assessor's property cards to understand the, the value that we would describe to that. Given some of the comments that were made about potential reuses, I may want to contemplate doing a separate appraisal that brings into consideration all the facts that the property cards do not. Meaning yes, we're looking at 2.08 acres, we're not looking at necessarily a subdivide of a lot or certainly not to the degree of four lots and things like that. So I, I may want to report back to you that we may want to seek a separate appraisal to get a truer value of the, of the land separate from the property cards, which is also the town's right under 30B.
Thank you. Further questions, Mary?
I'm all set, thanks.
Larry?
No, I'm set.
Julie?
I'm all set.
Joe, do you have enough direction to start an RFP at least?
I, I certainly do. And I think my last statement might be the first step though. Before the RFP, we would want to really lock down what we consider to be the value of that land. Because we want to be able to articulate that within the RFP. So before the RFP, I think I have to come to a conclusion on the appraisal process.
Right. And I, and I think that, let's verify that it's one lot. I believe it to be one lot.
Understood.
And assessor's card, I looked at the middle school one not too long ago and that still shows that at $7 million. I think we had an offer of 650 on that.
Yeah. But this has been helpful and I appreciate the board's consideration.
Thank you. I didn't open it up for anyone out there to speak, if there's anyone that wishes to speak. All set? Moving on. Town administrators' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the members of the board, I will tell you that I hope you have access to two things. First of all, both of which relate to the fire department. Thank you, gentlemen. First, as you may be aware, there's going to be a, a wonderful event, one of the things that personally and professionally I love and that would be welcoming in new firefighters off of probation and, and also honoring firefighters that have done, done great deeds. So we know that's gonna take place this Friday at 8:00 AM, October 1st, at the Peterson Firehouse Complex. And then also related to our fire department, going back to this year's annual town meeting, Article 18, as you may recall, our fire chief was the lead on upgrading public safety radios and I'm pleased to announce that we've just executed a contract with Motorola, Motorola Solutions for the tidy sum of $32,616.55 to get those, those radios on, online and that's through the great efforts of our chief and working with the Commonwealth to offset with grants. So very excited about that. And that would conclude my report.
Selectmen's report. Mary?
I think I'm good.
Julie?
Well, I had a really productive week. And I'm glad to be sitting here and that's about, that's about it.
Thank you. Larry?
I have nothing tonight.
I have nothing. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.